Mike, I'll let you introduce the guests tonight, please.
Absolutely. Tonight, we have three different presentations. The first presentation is from Riverview Elementary and here to present many of the great things that are happening there is Principal Josh Margram. Josh?
All right. Well, first off, thank you, everybody, for inviting me in and allowing me to do this. So normally, I would bring in students or teachers to help me out, but obviously, given the times, we're keeping the crowd to a minimum. So I wanted to have a way to still share some of the stuff that our students and teachers are doing at Riverview. One of the things that I think is extremely important right now in particular is that we're giving kids as many experiences that they can't get outside of school while we have them in our building. In particular with the kids being home for an extended period of time after last spring, I think it's important that while we do have the kids, we give them as many learning experiences as possible. So in that regard, I'm going to start off by first getting some participation from the board members. So you are going to have to participate today. I don't like boring presentations, so. So Pastor Shaq, let's start with you. Here's our question today. If you could travel anywhere in the world, where would you go?
Dubai.
Dubai? Wow, that's awesome. Mr. Sprague?
New Zealand.
New Zealand? All right. Mr. Weigle?
Australia.
Australia? That's a good one. That's actually mine. Ms. Baker?
Israel.
Israel? I have not heard that one yet. So those of you following along at home, since I feel like we have people following along at home now, you can think about this too. I want to tell a story. So when I used to teach at Wilson Middle School, because that's what I did before I did this, we had one of the VR headsets when they first came out. And if you remember before they got super fancy, you used to have to put your phone inside and it would kind of project around you. So it was the Samsung ones where you would have to put the Samsung phone inside of it. And you could plug in a place, any of those places you guys just said, and we could look around like we were there. So we got one of those sets at Wilson when I worked there, and all the adults were just as excited about it as the kids, actually. We're standing around in the office and everybody's giving a lot of exotic places like what you guys just brought up. What was most interesting to me, and this was my second year there at the building as a teacher, is there was two boys that I ended up coaching in football that were with us and they heard what was going on in the office with all the adults. And they said, "What is that?" We kind of explained how it worked and we asked them the question that we just asked you. We said, "If you could travel anywhere in the world, where would you go?" And these two 7th grade students at Wilson, at the exact same time, two different kids, not in the same household or anything, said, "King's Island." And it was kind of funny that they both said that, but at the same time, as a teacher, for them to be middle school students, I thought, "How are we not expanding their worldview beyond King's Island? How have they got to 7th grade and we haven't expanded their worldview yet?" From that point forward, part of my mission and part of the mission at Riverview right now is we want to bring in as many experiences into the buildings as we possibly can for our kids. And one of the things we did at Wilson in reaction to this, actually, is Garfield had a Washington DC trip going on for quite a while and Wilson didn't at that time. Myself and Matt Barger, so Matt, if you're watching, hello. He's probably not, he's not very good at technology, let's just say that. So he won't mind that I say that. He asked me a million questions about technology. But myself and Matt Barger, who actually ended up coaching together, those two boys, we started the Washington DC trip for Wilson and it grew and grew and grew to many students getting that opportunity and getting that experience. Because there's nothing quite like seeing some of those monuments in person and getting to experience that. So I want to talk about how we're bringing in experiences into Riverview. So now I ask the board members a question. So any teachers that are watching right now, this is a question for the teachers. And this is a question that we asked at Riverview too of all of our teachers. So we're in a unique situation. I'm sure everybody's aware of the situation that I'm talking about. Students coming back to the building had not been here in a long period of time. What learning experiences can we provide at the building that students cannot be exposed to elsewhere? So this is what we talked about in our opening meetings at the beginning of this school year. And this has been our mission so far this year. While we have these kids in front of us, we want to do as much as we possibly can to give them these learning experiences. So I want to talk about a couple of things up here in these pictures. And we'll kind of work from the top left here. So in the top left corner there, you see some boys there standing there. They actually have watermelons and you can't probably see the bags they're holding, but there's bags of produce that they're holding as well. This is actually our HUGS Community Garden. We did a walking field trip where we were able to take some 5th graders to our HUGS Community Garden. Shout out to Michelle Merritt, who helps manage that. She gave a great presentation to our kids. They still talk about it and we did that about a month ago. It was a really good experience for our kids and they were actually doing a unit at the time on being able to garden and being able to have a sustainable garden and how we do that. So it really fit in with what we were doing. So that was one of the experiences we've gotten this year. To the far left there, that's actually, it's kind of dark. I know it's hard to see. That's a picture of me soaking wet and freezing behind a waterfall. One of the new segments that we've done on our video news at Riverview is Learn Something New. We try to talk about things that we do outside of school or that the students do outside of school that they want to share. And we try to bring that in video form to the students. That was actually me behind a waterfall in Iceland. I was kind of like a weather correspondent in a hurricane is what it felt like. And then bottom left there, that's actually our students working on, I don't, I didn't know what this was actually. They had to explain it to me. Elephant toothpaste. I don't know if anybody's ever heard of that. I can't actually explain how it works. They explained it a lot better than me, actually. But they learned a lot of vocabulary through that about kinetic energy and they were all telling me all about it and super excited about that. There in the middle is a picture of our yearly, we do this yearly, our Great Miami River cleanup. Some of our students volunteer to go clean up the area. One of the things that our students always talk about is the litter in the neighborhood and that they want to get rid of it. And so we give them opportunities to be a part of that change. Bottom right there, we did a community walk and it was a way our 2nd graders got an opportunity. They were working on observations. And there, you can kind of see them. They have little notepads in their hands looking down and they're writing observations about their neighborhoods. So we actually walked around some of our Riverview neighborhoods. And then shout out to one of the people in the building here today. Up there in the top right is our very own Rick Pate. Thank you to Rick Pate. He got to share one of his passions with us. Our 5th graders were working on a pollination unit. And he got to come to us and talk about his work that he's done with bees. And it was, I'm not going to lie, I learned a ton of stuff about bees. I didn't know much about bees and it was a phenomenal presentation. You can see there in the picture, all the kids with their hands up and pointing at stuff. It was very engaging. Rick, obviously, thank you for coming in. We really appreciate it. So moving on. Part of my job too, and part of what we want to do at Riverview, is we want to give teachers those experiences too. You guys, obviously, some of the places the board members mentioned, looking at pictures of that is great and talking about it is great. But if you can have experiences, if we bring stuff to the school from that place or if you even get to go there, that's obviously a much better experience. So we want to do this for the staff too. It's the same with adults as it is kids. If we can give them meaningful and relevant professional development, it will make a bigger impact. So one of the questions I ask myself is what professional development can we do that's meaningful and relevant with our teachers? Up there at the top, I want to shout out what we did. We had to do this in a remote setting, obviously, but we did what we called a differentiated PD. And basically, it was like a professional conference where a lot of our staff were the presenters and teachers got to choose which sessions at different times that they attended. Up there in the top, I want to shout out Angela Andrews. She's up there in the top right. Obviously, you see a bunch of little pictures of people. I'm sure you guys are familiar with these video platforms now. And Angela Andrews did a phenomenal job. She was talking to our teachers about a tech resource that a lot of our teachers have been using that she actually helped us get for the whole building. So shout out to Angela. Bottom right there, I got to give a shout out to one of our other administrators in the district. Jesse Funston, actually, he actually videoed in to one of our trainings and helped me do a presentation with some of our teachers about using debate in the classroom and how we set that up. And then another person in the building today, I have to shout out Pastor Shaq. We were going to do a walkthrough tour, but she was willing to give a virtual tour, which I'm sure was a little bit weird. But Pastor Shaq, we really appreciate that you were able to do that. We wanted our students to, or our teachers to see what sort of resources were available to our students. So thank you. So this is the final, final sales pitch here. Don't just take my word for it. So I wanted some way to bring our teachers and students to you guys because I think their words hold a lot more weight than mine. So I'm going to blow this up. They're going to talk to you about some of the experiences that we mentioned prior.
I think we should have more field trips because I love learning and it will help others learn too. The female bees are the ones that go out and open and collect pollen and nectar.
There is a bunch of different ways you can learn, but this way, you actually have more fun, which also helps you get into your career better.
When we went to the HUGS Garden Field Trip, I learned that when you decompose, it turns the soil.
And you can accomplish a lot of different things when you learn a bunch of new things.
Whenever a bee stings you, when it's trying to fly away, you know, like the stinger is connected to its whole body and the guts. And when it pulls away, the bee's turned away, it actually dies because all the guts come out.
Very descriptive language.
I love learning new things because it inspires me to do different and good things in the world when I grow up. I like always wanted to be a scientist. When you go to these field trips, you learn more about the environment.
To learn that when the starbirds, they plant them, like when it turned winter, they don't grow, but they can keep them in there and they won't die.
And you learn more about the world.
Glad to know what was found because we got to help our community and we stayed some fish.
I'm Hannah and you and I come here today. And there was trash on the sidewalks and we, it's all beautiful stuff. But we didn't see any dragonflies, bees, or black flies. But it was all beautiful because we know it's beautiful. And sometimes the world's beautiful and sometimes it's not. These people will learn a lot.
I learned how to create an iMovie today from Donna Cole. She did a fantastic job. And now I can take this technology and make things a little more exciting and fun for my students.
At yesterday's professional development, I got to attend Mr. Funston and Mr. Margram's PD on debating in the classroom. So I can't wait to incorporate that into my classroom and my opinion writing unit.
I did the Cambie presentation with Angela Andrews. It really helped me understand how I could modify and accommodate on technology for my special ed students.
I was able to go to a presentation done by Jackie Baker on how to help kids who have impulsivity problems control some of those emotions and help them be more successful in the classroom and during less structured times like in the cafeteria.
One of my PDs I got to do was a virtual tour of Hype by Pastor Shaq. It was amazing to see the opportunities that our students have here in Hamilton in their own community and to learn how we can get involved in this amazing program.
This is the word of education.
This is the word of life crew.
A few words of wisdom.
In person?
In person.
No matter.
Cosmo.
The only thing about.
This is the word of life crew.
Make a great evening or not.
The trust knows you.
All right. So unless there's any questions from you guys, that's all I got. I really appreciate you giving us a short time here to share what's going on at Riverview. Thank you.
Very, very good. And this is my favorite part was when we get to see what's actually going on out there and I'm always impressed.
Thank you.
Josh, thanks for giving these kids those experiences because, I mean, I totally realize how many students, their world is so small anymore. And over the years, taking kids, I've taken kids to Cincinnati and to different places and they have no idea right now what's there. Going to Middletown is sometime a big trip. I don't know why you would go to Middletown, but anyway. I'm just saying.
I didn't say.
Sorry, Middletown. I think offering those kids those opportunities that they can't get in other ways is extremely important for their worldview because the world is so small.
Absolutely.
So wonderful job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll say the same thing. I feel a bit, I appreciate all the staff that, you know, that are stepping up the box and being creative. And you said that the world is small. It's getting even smaller now, you know, because of, you know, the time that we're in the pandemic. So the fact that you guys are being extra creative to give these kids these experiences, some kids again have never, you know, been outside their area. And, you know, after what, 275 loops, so let alone give them the opportunity as possible to dream to go here and be here. And then just the great things that we have in our communities, like the HUGS Garden, like the observation of being a part of the community. And so that they don't say, "Okay, I'm graduating, I'm cutting out," but they see that we have some great things here in Hamilton to be a part of. So shout out to you guys.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Margram, I certainly want to compliment you on just your leadership, not only this year at Riverview, but also through this pandemic. You know, we've had a lot of people step up and lead and you're certainly one of those. And you continue to demonstrate that on a daily basis and I personally want to thank you for that. I also want to thank you for bringing applicable education into our classrooms. We talk about all of this, but how does it connect to the real world and giving some of these real world experiences? And trying to do that in the scope of a classroom is difficult. Especially when your scope of understanding and your scope that you see the world in is smaller at times. And you've been able to do that. You've been able to get your staff to buy into those things. That's critically, critically important to the overall educational experience. And the last thing I want to compliment you on is that you do a tremendous job connecting with the Riverview community. Connecting with the various resources, the various things that are going on at Riverview. You're out there, you're out in, you're out at dismissal, you're down in the neighborhood. People know you by name. That's a really important connection when you're running those buildings. So I want to publicly thank you for all of those things that you do for this district.
Well, thank you, guys. Well, I'm just going to come to this meeting all the time if that's how it goes. But seriously, thank you, guys. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank the teachers too for all their hard work. They have been very resilient, very cooperative through everything. And our students and families have been great too. So definitely not me. It's all the others.
Thank you, Mr. Margram. Our second guest this evening is our Assistant Director of AGE. And AGE stands for Assessment, Gifted, and ELL. And so Mr. Moore really wears a lot of different hats. And on top of that, he dabbles into our technology realm with creating various platforms for us to be able to analyze data. And I know he's going to get into that this evening. So, Mr. Moore, the floor is yours.
Great. Well, thank you for letting me come out and present to you. A lot of mine is behind the scenes. And it looks like my cast has gone away, so let's get that back and going. So what I want to do right off the bat while I'm working on this technology piece is just thank the folks that have made the assessments happen this particular season. And, you know, the state did not give us any exemptions. There were no cancellation of tests this fall, but we got through it. So I wanted to thank a few people in particular. The administrators, the teachers, the students, the parents. And a group I really want to mention is some of our retired teachers. Connie Bowling, Fawn Pettit, and Sue Head. They are part of our testing team and without them, we really couldn't have got a lot of the testing done. So I want to move into presentation mode. There we go. Hopefully, it sticks with me this time. All right, great. All right. So a lot of the focus that I'm going to show this time when I update you on the AGE or Assessment, Gifted, and ESL department is on a technology base and what we've been working on kind of behind the scenes. One of the goals that we have is to put data at the teachers' and the principals' fingertips. Instead of them spending their TBT time, their BLT time, that's like teacher team, you know, when they get together and analyze data and building teams. But have it at their fingertips so they're not pulling the data together within a few clicks. They have something that's actionable that they can make instructional decisions on. So one of the first things that I created a few years back and we still use, we used again this fall and it's updated, is the Assessment website. It's icon-driven. Everything that you need to give a test and then the results come through this site. If there's an accommodation, if the child needs an interpreter or a special ed accommodation, all of the manuals and everything are on this site. And again, like I said earlier, the shout out truly goes to all the people I've mentioned before because this fall, we had 95% participation rate for our kindergarten readiness test. And again, thanks to those, everybody that was involved. And our 3rd grade test, we had 95% as well. And for our MAP test, we were at 93%. And if you think back, the last assessment, the last benchmark we had of where our kids were academically was last winter. So having that high of a percentage rate, you know, that means that the community really came together, parents, teachers, administrators, to get this done so that we could have an idea of where kids are so we can make the right instructional decisions for the kids. All right. So I want to transition to some of the data dashboards that I've created. When I came here last time and I looked at the slide and I told folks, "I want to move away from just spreadsheets. I want something that people can interact with, that we can get down to the data easily and you don't have to be an expert on how to use Excel or Google Sheets to do it." So these are just some examples of that. The first one is our Fawness and Penel Reading Levels Dashboard. This allowed the teachers to enter in levels and then we were able to display that. They can click on any of those bar graphs and it filters for kids just in that grade level, I mean, that reading level. And there's other filters as well. The second one is our MAP results. We were able to put those into tiers. And kudos to Andrea Belevins for training and showing everyone how to use administer map and how to use the reports. This particular report will be coming out after we've had a little bit more training and we've mastered our MAP reports in the system. We've also been able to break things down, quintiles, it just means it's broken down into five parts. But we even break things down for each part of the test. We also have predictions on how the kids will do on Ohio State tests. And then one of the things we have to do according to the state as part of the 3rd grade reading guarantee is write reading improvement and monitoring plans. So through these dashboards, we were able to really monitor and within a few clicks, every morning I would update out of when the teachers completed their REMPS so that they could see and the principals could see, we were getting closer and closer to completion. We're almost done with grades 1 through 3 and we'll be done with kindergarten by the end of the month. And then the last one I have up there is our 3rd grade promotion dashboard. And this is what we're going to use. We don't have the data in it yet and I'm not going to show any student names, so that's why that's blocked out. But we don't have any data in there, but that's our next level of work. And all this comes down to us turning data into action. So what I have up there, you'll see after I make a few clicks why they're placed the way they are. But these are some of the major vendors that we deal with. The one up at the top, the Ohio State test. Ohio State tests haven't changed, but the vendor that the state uses have, we now use Cambie. It used to be Air Test. So if you see Air Test, Cambie and Test, same thing. But this is really what we want to do. We want to work with school leaders. We want to create the dashboards and the data systems so they can get to the data quickly so they can make the appropriate instructional decisions for kids. And then engaging our families in understanding these dashboards as well. So like I said, last year I came and I said we were going to build these dashboards. We're there. You give me a data set, you give me a spreadsheet, we can create a dashboard that's easy to use. Our goal for next year, our next level of work for next year is to create a live database and to fine-tune our current spreadsheets to create better dashboards that really are honed in on what our needs are at the building level. And then the last thing is to provide ongoing PD for our teachers and staff so that people understand how to use these tools. So last year, again, this is what I presented, I'm transitioning into, into the gifted part. So we went from A to G. So this is what I presented last year on our gifted students. This year, it looks like this. So we went from that same type of spreadsheet, goes into an actionable dashboard. And I'll show you a little bit later how one of these works, how they're interactive. Every morning, I, we have a program called Elevation. It has an extra L in there because it's for English language learners. And I've learned a lot by using this program to build our own dashboards. But this particular program, I look at it so I know every day that as good as yesterday, that we had 642 English learners. I know that 361 of them have exited the program. But the federal government requires us to monitor those kids for academic purposes for four years. I know where they are in buildings, their grade level, I know their language level, I know their codes in DASL or EMIS. I know what languages they speak. So this is a great tool and it's the same tool I want to give to our building administrators and our teachers that they can look at this and know, as good as yesterday, this is where we are. All right? This is one thing that I haven't been able to do in dashboards yet. And this is trend, trend data. So over the years, from 2005 to just this year, you can see our EL population. We started out in like 500, we dipped down to 400. Last year, we hit our high about 730 and now we're down to about 650. And a lot of that is our kindergarten numbers are down this year with ELs. Then the other side, because a lot of our English learners are Hispanic and we actually have a sizable population, it doesn't show up all that much on there, Pacific Islanders from Micronesia. But you can see over time how the demographics ethnically and by race have changed. Our Hispanic population has grown to our second largest race demographic. So now I'm going to transition into enrollment. And this is the piece I'm going to show you how these dashboards work. So this is one of the first dashboards that I did, just to show you how it kind of works. So this is the actual dashboard. And I'm going to go to View. So if I want to see a particular school, I click here. Let's say we pick Hamilton High. I click Only. As soon as the blue line is done at the top, and it'll go a little bit slower because I'm casting, then this will only show you Hamilton High's data. Of course, it always goes slower when you're presenting, right? That's just the way it goes. All right, there we go. So now you can see, we had, you know, we had from kindergarten through 12th grade, now we have through 9th. A few of those 9th graders at the high score are some of our special needs kids. But we had, there's our 10th, 11th, and 12th graders. We have the breakdown on their ethnicity. Down at the bottom here, we have how many IEP students, 504 students, EL students. And if you notice, this is where the students would actually be listed. I blocked that out for FERPA reasons. But that's how easy these work. If I wanted to see just 10th graders, I can go over here to this block and click on that. And as soon as the blue lines go, now I'm seeing just the data for 10th grade. So I just wanted to give you a quick taste of how these work. And again, I go back to what I said at the very beginning. This is going to put data in teachers' hands with a few clicks. They can get down to what they need so they can start prescribing and making instructional decisions for our kids. So I'm going to go back to the presentation. And, all right. And then the last one, the only state test that was released last year was the OALPA test. The OALPA is Ohio English Language Proficiency Assessment. So what I was able to do during the spring, had a little, a little extra time. But what I was able to do was take the data from the state, everybody gets the same data from the state, same spreadsheet, and basically connect it in. So next year, when I get the data from the state, all I have to do is connect it to this spreadsheet, update the year, and I'm done. So what I'm saying is instead of spending hours, days, weeks, now we have a tool where I can take the raw data, connect it to a dashboard, and it's actionable within an hour. All right? So take that as just the example. And when we get to June, if we have our spring test, right, that I'll be able to connect those within a day or so instead of spending two to three weeks massaging spreadsheets, putting it in a way that people can deal with it. That's just going to get. That's just going to get us ahead of the game and putting the data in the hands of our principals so that they can work with teachers and make the best decisions for our kids. So, that's, that's the end of the presentation. I wanted to keep it short and sweet, but I think this is definitely going to be a powerful tool. It integrates with everything we have. I had a decision between Tableau and Google Data Studio. There was a cost factor, but the biggest thing was, we're a Google District and this fit right in. So, there you go.
Corbin, I just want to say how impressive seeing this over the years, how we try to provide data to teachers so they, like you said, could be actionable. This, it's, how can I say, it's pleasing to the eye. It's, it's not just a bunch of numbers sitting there that the teachers dig into, it's actually interactive with, for the teachers. Great job on this. And I like, and I was going to say this to Mike, both Josh and Corbin have said, kudos, or have shout-outs for other staff members, and that collaboration is so important for us as a district to move ahead. And Corbin, I know you skip around to a lot of different people, and I just appreciate all the work that you do for this.
Thank you. And if you want to see how the teachers look at it, some of the reading dashboards I was talking about, if you're outside the district, just so you know, this is secure, I did this in an incognito site, this is what it looks like. So, people cannot access it if they're not within the school district. But, if you look at it as a principal or a teacher, and I give you the right sharing permissions, it looks like this. And these are actionable, and they're built right in too. So, if I wanted to click on this right here, I can click on that and it works right in the website.
Corbin, thank you for the update. I want to again echo everything that Lauren just mentioned, and since I've been on the board past thirteen years, it just seems that, I'm sorry, seven years. Seven years. It just seems like we're the, you know, we're just at the precipice with technology and we're continuing in that endeavor, so I just hats off to you and your team in making it happen.
Corbin, you were one of the very first people I met six years ago when I came to Hamilton City Schools, and the two of us have lived through a lot with this innovation. When I started here, and I know I sat down with you, we talked a lot about, how can we make data easily accessible to teachers so it's not in spreadsheets and that, but it's applicable and we can take it and we can use it. You have really taken that ball and run with it over the last five to six years, and especially the last two to three, we've really grown leaps and bounds. And, you know, we talk about being a lifelong learner. I think you model that. I think everything you do, you are learning every day, and you've forgotten more than I know about some of these things.
I always tell you, you can learn a lot on YouTube.
I just want to compliment you because I don't think anyone outside of education understands the importance of this. This is critical, critical work that is done behind the scenes, and there isn't a ton of fanfare about it, but it's critical and it is a significant part on why we were able to grow our students at such a huge rate over the last couple of years. Because we had the data available to us, we understood how to interpret it, and we took it and we used it to make applicable changes in our instructional practices. And those are all very, very, very important concepts. And so, you know, it takes a team of people, but it also takes a leader to lead those groups. And I want to compliment you as well as the team that you work with on just that, that's a huge step forward. And I can tell you, we are the envy of many districts in the surrounding area with many of these resources, and a lot of that goes to the work and time and effort and creativity that you've put into this. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And thanks to the team I worked with upstairs, Dustin and Tricia and the whole team, they're always there if I have a question and we talk through it, it's great. But, again, thank you for letting me come out and present tonight.
Good stuff, thank you.
Yes. Corbin, I think I'm having the same problems you had. It's not wanting to cast. Well, we might have to just go with your hard packets in your... Yeah, I'm on cast. Yeah, you want to try that? Yeah, let me try that real quick. Okay, let me try that. Sometimes it doesn't work as well on my computer as it does my Chromebook.
Now you got it.
Josh, I just shared it with you, so...
I don't know what to do.
Yeah, I'll let, I'll let Josh cast it and then...
It's all magic, man.
So, while Josh is trying to get that ready, what I want to do is obviously, last, last work session, we started giving these COVID dashboard updates, so I want to kind of go back to our last session, kind of where we left off, and give you an update as far as where we are district-wide with some of the, some of the COVID situations that are going on right now. So, thank you, Josh.
No problem.
So, going back to kind of our last update, at that point, we had seven confirmed cases and we had eighteen exposures within our teaching staff. So, I want to give you a couple of updates for the past couple of weeks because some of these numbers are starting to get a little bit alarming when we start looking at the number of staff that we have with positive cases and with quarantines. So, going back to the week of ten twenty-six, we were experiencing five confirmed cases amongst our teaching staff, which then resulted in eight exposures either from those situations or other situations. So, we had thirteen teaching staff out the week of ten twenty-six, which then, if you think about that, that carries on into the next week as well. And then, when you look at the next week, going back to the week of eleven-two, we unfortunately doubled our exposures that week and the number of teachers that we had quarantined up to seventeen. We also received four more confirmed cases that week of COVID amongst our, amongst our teaching staff. The week of eleven-nine, obviously, I'm just giving you numbers based on the first couple of days of this week. You know, I put this information together yesterday. I can tell you right now that that exposure number has grown to seven, and the confirmed case has grown to three since I put this presentation together yesterday afternoon. So, we've experienced some more information. So, when I look at basically where we're at total, going back to the beginning of the year, we've had forty-six teaching staff quarantined at some point during the school year. We've had seventeen confirmed cases. So, you know, we're looking at sixty-three total teaching staff that have been quarantined either because of a confirmed case or because of exposure to someone throughout this school year. I also want to give you a quick update on student confirmed cases and student exposures. We are seeing, starting to see a little bit more of an increase in that area as well. This is based on, going back again, this is kind of based on the year at a glance. So, if you look across the bottom, there's each one of our buildings. So, the confirmed cases, this is up through this past week. I will tell you that, obviously, since Josh presented earlier today, I can say, if Josh was not on this list earlier this week, we did not have a confirmed case at Riverview. We do now have a couple of situations this week where that has occurred. So, we do have, you know, up to the highest, obviously, is the high school with eleven confirmed cases this year. That is, you know, with a student body of, you know, fifteen, sixteen hundred, that would be kind of expected, they would be the highest number. Here's the number of student quarantines. So, the student quarantine numbers, these are the number of students who have been quarantined at some point throughout the year, going back again to the beginning of the year. So, most of our buildings are right around that twenty number. Again, the high school, we've had a significant number. We've had a large, large uptick this past ten days at Highland. We've had a large number of students quarantined there. And then, we've also had, seen a little bit of an increase in number of Bridgeport. And this week also, Brookwood has become a building where we've seen some increased cases and increased exposures there as well. This is probably the most concerning slide that I want to make sure we're updating and giving information on. Going back to October fourteenth, which was when we started going back five days face-to-face. For that three-day week of October fourteenth, we had a hundred and fifty-nine total absences from our staff that week. We needed a hundred and twenty-two substitutes, and eighty of those substitute positions were filled that week. So, if you remember last, last time when I was talking at the work session, we were saying we were right about that sixty, seventy percent fill rate. That's going back to that October fourteenth timeframe. So, fast forward to October nineteenth through the twenty-third. So, this is a five-day week. We had three hundred and twenty-six absences. We had two hundred and fifty of those absences where we needed substitutes, and then we had a hundred and fifty-one of those filled. So, during that week, we had a hundred absences that were not filled. So, if you average that out, that's about twenty per day. So, we had twenty absences where we didn't have a substitute in the classroom, which meant we were obviously doing some internal coverage and subbing within our buildings. Again, fast forward to the next week, October twenty-sixth through the thirtieth, we increased to three hundred and forty-one absences. Two hundred and forty-nine of those were absences where we needed subs, a hundred and fifty of those were filled. Go to the next week, November second through sixth, and here's where the numbers start getting a little bit more concerning or alarming. That was a four-day week because November third, we did not have students. So, when you look at those numbers, we had three hundred and fifty-three absences during that week in four days. So, we're looking at ninety, eighty-five to ninety teacher absences per day during that week. We had two hundred and sub, two hundred and seven substitutes needed, we filled a hundred and seventeen of those. If you go forward to this week, the first three days of this week, so November ninth, tenth, and eleventh, just the first three days, we've had two hundred and eighty-three absences, which is over a ninety average per day. We have two hundred and eighty of those that needed substitutes. We had seventy-six of those that filled. So, we're looking at about a thirty-five percent average fill rate for the first three days this week. When we're evaluating these numbers and when we're evaluating our staffing, what we have to look at is obviously, you know, the number of subs that we're getting on a daily basis, we're getting an average of about thirty subs district-wide. So, if we have any more than three to four teachers out in any given building, that means we're obviously subbing and internally covering for those classes where those teachers are absent. I can tell you that just looking at today's number, today's number, when I left my office, we were at a twenty-nine percent fill rate for this specific day. So, these numbers are getting to be a little bit concerning as we start looking at, obviously, staffing our buildings and making sure that we're obviously able to serve the kids and provide them the classrooms that they need with teachers, with substitutes, with coverage from day to day. So, we're going to continue to monitor these numbers. We're meeting daily to evaluate these numbers and to make kind of decisions and plans moving forward as we go through this time, as we see this, these numbers continue to increase. So, if you have any questions, I think Mr. Holbrook's also going to add a little bit of information that he would like to add based on this information.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Back, back in October, when we came back five days a week, one of the things that we communicated and stressed is the ability to be flexible. Today was a very alarming day in our district in the fact that we were stretched extremely thin with subbing. We, we used every single resource that we had to make sure that we had certified qualified adults with our students every day. But, if this trend continues, we may have to look at pivoting in a different direction for a period of time. And this isn't a trend that is just in Hamilton, this is a trend not just in Butler County but statewide. The availability of substitute teachers is razor-thin, and the resources that we have in our district is finite. What we're cautioning all parents and staff is continue to practice those positive protocols that we know have been successful. But, even with that, we know that the environment is such that the virus discriminates against no one. And so, the reason for my statements tonight is that we want to make our parents and prepare our parents for the fact that there may be a period of time where we would have to do some remote learning for you, at least a fourteen, fourteen-day period. That may be for a particular building as opposed to the district. It doesn't make sense to shut the entire district down if it's specific buildings that we have huge, you know, deficiencies with staffing. It may mean that we can't provide the same level of transportation service that we do now, but yet can keep our buildings open if it's an issue with our bus drivers. But, the, the biggest piece is that we need to start preparing for the possibility of this occurring. It's not going to happen tomorrow, but it's going to happen on a short notice because from day to day, the staffing issues and the numbers change dramatically. And we're very concerned that we see the trend in the manner that it's being projected out to be. We have one week left until we have a Thanksgiving week holiday, and then we come back for school for three weeks before we're off on the winter recess. And so, with those times in mind, we're going to use every available resource to keep our buildings open, but start thinking about plans on if we were to have to shut down for a period of time, what does your childcare look like? What does remote learning look like? What's that look like with the environment in your homes? We will provide students and make sure that they have Chromebooks, make sure that they have Wi-Fi hotspots, but just having a conducive environment is something that we need to start planning on now because, once again, it's uncertain. We'll do everything we can, but I just want to caution parents, I want to caution staff in that, that this could be our reality for a period of time, and I think we need to prepare for anything and everything. Any questions from the board?
Mike, I just appreciate you, you guys thinking ahead about this. There's no way we can run a school without teachers and without transportation involved, and it's a daily challenge for, in the buildings, just to try to cover when teachers are absent. I can understand how daunting a task that is, and we're going to have to move on a dime when, when we see these numbers climbing like they are right now. So, I appreciate your, your forethought on trying to get prepared for that. I think parents need to be prepared for that eventuality if it's going to come.
And I understand, we're doing everything we can. Our instructional coaches have stepped up and taken classrooms that they're unfamiliar with, but they're, but they're expert teachers, they figure it out. You know, our Title I teachers are covering classrooms and students that they're unfamiliar with, but they're making it work. But, there is a limit to those things that we can do, and so, you know, we're going to continue to exhaust every single resource. But, there may come a time when those resources are exhausted, and I think we just need to prepare.
I appreciate your candor and thank you for updating the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weggel.
Thank you.
We're going to move into our regular session of our meeting. At this time, will you please stand and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good to see everyone again tonight. We have most of our directors here in the building and it's good to see a lot of these familiar faces. We'll move down to item B, approval of the minutes. We'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting.
Make that motion.
I'll second that.
First by Mrs. Baker, second by Mr. Sprague. Any questions or comments? Mr. Hancock, we call a roll.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Sprague?
Yes.
Mr. Waggles?
Yes. Okay, we'll go to superintendent's comments. Mr. Holbrook?
Yes, I have several different things tonight. First, I just want to compliment the resiliency of our staff on what we're dealing with, with this pandemic. I tried to express that during the work session, but once again, I think everybody, not only our upper administration or administrators, our teachers, our instructional aides, our bus drivers, our cooks, you know, everybody that's critical to the educational operation has stepped up and really done a tremendous job. And, you know, it's not easy and we may not always agree on everything, but I think everybody has the mindset that we need to do what's best for our students and we need to keep that idea in mind. And as we move through this, we just need to continue with that spirit of what is best for our students. We are going to get through this and Hamilton is going to thrive because the people that we have are tremendous and I think that needs to be publicly stated. The second thing, here in a few minutes, you are going to be voting on the consent agenda. I would be remiss if I did not point out and recognize Joni Copas for her decades of service to this district. Her retirement letter is on that, that board agenda this evening. And I just want to personally thank Joni for all the time and effort she's put into her hometown as she served as Director of Communications for this district. And thank you for your service, Joni.
Thank you. I try to be a well-respected instructor and employee of the district and I need to follow Lauren's lead, run for school board someday.
There you go.
Thanks, Joni.
Thank you, Joni.
Thank you.
And finally, you do have a last-minute field trip that was added to the agenda. Our boys' basketball team has the opportunity to compete in a pretty elite tournament in Brownsburg, Indiana. And it's, it's called Sneakers for Santa Shootout. It's on December 5th. It's a one-game tournament and we would be paired against Indiana Cathedral, which is a pretty significant program in the state of Indiana. And it's quite an honor to even be asked to participate in that. So that's a huge compliment to Big Blue Athletics. And so, that'll be on your, on the agenda for later this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holbrook. Item D, City Council comments. I believe Councilman Ryan's here to update the board.
Well, good evening, school board. It's so nice to see you guys. I know it's been a while. So, I hope everybody is feeling healthy, everybody's safe, everybody's family's doing okay, given the circumstances. So, I will obviously make my comments as brief as possible. Let's see here, economic development updates. As you know, Hamilton, we haven't really slowed down any, given the circumstances. So we are still rocking and rolling. And I think that's an appropriate description of our aggressiveness during this time. We just broke ground on a international company that's relocated here. They have come from Spain. SECA International just broke ground of, or North Hamilton, or sorry, our enterprise park. It's their first North American facility. It is a $72 million investment to the city. It's going to be creating 72 jobs, so we're very excited about that. Also, on the economic development front, Home Depot will be opening up a distribution hub and they will also be creating about 100 jobs as well. So, positive news given the current circumstances, so we're very excited about that. Looking into 2021, Spooky Nook is well on its way to getting constructed on time, so hopefully a year from now, we'll be able to take a tour of our brand-new facility. We're going to be focusing heavily on our neighborhoods. We're going to be fighting blight, crime, vacant housing, dilapidated housing. And right now, council is currently working on some tough legislation that's going to address that. And as, as you know, our neighborhoods are very unique and we're going to do everything we can to empower them, to clean them up, because it just makes the whole city stronger. It makes everything safer. So, we will be aggressively attacking that. And lastly, I know Superintendent Holbrook just mentioned something about the surge that we are currently experiencing in the city. It's very unfortunate, but we are a resilient community. We are stubborn and we are not going to let this beat us down. So with that being said, the Health Department is really recommending that we continue to wear our mask in public, practice social distancing when able, to wash your hands as much as you can. And if we can do all that as a community, we can help stop the spread and try to get back to some type of normalcy before this vaccine gets here. So, other than that, that's all I have. Any other questions? Comments?
I'll be forward to that.
Thank you.
We appreciate you stopping by tonight.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Happy Thanksgiving if I don't see you guys.
You too.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to item number, or letter E, hearing of citizens. I don't see anyone out there tonight, so we're going to move on to our consent agenda, item five. We'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed.
I'm going to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we've got a, first by Mr. Sprague, second by Mrs. Matthews. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, Mr. Hancock, we call a roll, please.
Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Sprague?
Yes.
Mr. Waggles?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
And then we're going to move down to Treasurer's report, item number six. All right.
Mr. President, I have three items for you tonight. The first item is a memorandum of understanding between the governing board of the southwestern Ohio Council of Governments and, and the district. What this is, is that they needed to update some language because this is the group that we use for our substitute teacher pool over in Warren County. And they, they are incurring some additional costs in the area of unemployment that they wouldn't normally due to this current situation. And the contract really didn't allow for that. They were able to cover it in the past, but it's grown to such a point that they needed to do that. So, there'll be some additional costs to that, but I think we'll be able to mitigate that for some other reasons, starting later this year. Second item is approval of five purchase requisitions that we're recommending tonight. And then finally, the financial reports for the month of October. At this point, we are one-third of the way through the fiscal year. And if I guess right, there we go. So we'd estimated that we would have revenue of 35.4 million right now. We're at 36.5 million. And it, as you look at that, the general property tax is, is the primary cause, running 762,000, 566, better than planned. Well, you jumped up on mine. Why is it not doing that?
It doesn't like you.
It doesn't like me. That's strange. Why, why it doesn't do that, I don't know. It's coming right out of the boards, Doc P, so, you know, why it wouldn't jump over there, I have no idea. Let me check this real quick, see if I can cast that desktop a different way. And it might just go this way. Yeah, let's see if it goes like that. Well, thank you. Is that a little better?
Yeah.
I have to point out, I was able to fix mine. Just so it's clear. But I have to give him my credit. He helped me a few days ago. I had this exact thing, Mr. Wright did, and, and that's exactly how we just fixed it. As I was saying, total revenue of 35.4 million, estimated, we're currently at 36.5 million, $188,000, better than planned for a couple of primary reasons. General property tax, and we've talked about this before, we had made the estimate, or that we would have about a 10% lull or slowdown in collections due to the pandemic. A lot of people thought that. It simply did, did not happen, which is good news. So we came in really pretty close to what we had last year in October of 2019. We had 8.2 million. We came in at 8,149, so really didn't slack off very much at all. And so, so that's good news for the district and in the upcoming financial forecast, we've adjusted for that and allowed for it. In the, in the grand scheme of things, over the forecast period, it didn't change anything because we had predicted that it was coming back within the next year to two years anyway. So, it all washed out one way or the other over a period of time. So, we'll just reflect that change going forward. Tangible personal property tax, as you look at those numbers in 2019 and 2018, you know, 70,000 versus 22,000, we guessed somewhere in the middle and actually went up, went up a little bit. So, that's good news and we'll adjust for that as well, but not a, a huge material number in relationship to our size. Unrestricted grants and aid, that's your main number from the state funding formula, 24,492,472, and we're at 24.6 million, 151,000, better than planned. The only thing really going on with state funding right now is you, you get a little more funding this year in preschool and a little more funding in transportation. Other than that, the number by the time the year is out currently is going to end up what last year's number was plus whatever those two increases are for the year. So, you're not going to see a huge increase at all in those line items and, and that's consistent with what we had predicted. The restricted grants and aid are just that, a portion of the school foundation formula. Basically, it's your economic disadvantaged funding, which is a line item where we have the code there. So we're, we're running very close to what we expected. The property tax allocation, that's the portion of your tax bill paid on your behalf by the state of Ohio and that's trending as it has in the past. We're within $5,300. And then all other operating revenue, and that's, that's going to rebound it and ends up running a little bit better than planned. This is one that we didn't try to do any fancy timing of differences month to month. We just spread it out over the year. And so we'll continue to watch it, but that's, that is a line item that's going to be down primarily because interest earnings are going to be down by over $400,000 this year. The rates have tanked, we just talked about that. And we did have a one-time payment of about $411,000 that we took in as part of a renegotiation of a copier contract last year, one-time thing. So, so those numbers are going to be down. Nothing that we did not expect. On the expenditure side, we're running, we estimated 33.7 million. We're running at 33.1 million or 611,000 less than plan. Right now, salaries and wages running 382, 348, more than, more than planned. Again, we're looking at all the live data there and when we do that November update, we'll spread those numbers out. We're going to see some interesting numbers over the next few months, I'll just tell you, because, because as we go through and start doing these contracts and we start putting out retro pays and things like that, it's going to dump some money in. And that's probably going to happen all the way through February, quite frankly, by the time we get all that processed. The fringe benefits, running 191, almost 192,000 more than planned. And again, you know, we're, we're looking at those and we've allowed for that in, in the financial forecast update. Purchased services, running $1 million less than last year. We have some bills, we know that there are still coming through that are sizable, so we think that's going to catch up in, in large degree as compared to where it's at right now. The supplies and materials, 218,000, better, lower than planned. And it's actually running lower than last year, but as you can see, the purchase, or the supplies and materials, that number moves around on you from year to year. It's been backing down the last couple of years, which is, is a good thing. We'll continue to watch it. That's another one of those line items that we looked at last year, that, that last quarter of last year, didn't have people in the buildings. So we did see some changes in spending patterns in purchased services, supplies, materials during those two, two quarters. Finally, the capital outlay, estimated 84,000 and came in at 127,279. In my update to you last night, I said that, you know, the variance was 43,279 and we don't care. And the reason we don't care is because we're going to end up coding all these to the permanent improvement fund at the end of the year. So, so those numbers just go, happen as the decisions are made throughout the year. They're making good decisions as to what they need and when they happen to hit that line item, they're going to land in the permanent improvement fund at the end of the year. And so the building budgets, departmental budgets, all those things will continue to control those expenditures as they have in the past. Other objects, and that's just miscellaneous expenditures, a variety of things that are required to code to that line item. That line item kind of looks the best of all. You know, it's, it's 9,847 less than a year ago, not particularly out of line from what we're seeing in previous years. So, you know, we're off and running a third of the way through fiscal year 21. Any questions?
I think so. Well, and, thank you, Mr. Hancock. Is that all, is all you have?
Yeah. That was the final piece, we just need to vote.
Sure. Entertain a motion to accept those reports.
Make that motion. Second?
First by Mrs. Baker, second by Mrs. Matthews. I don't think we have any questions. Mr. Hancock, we call a roll.
Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Sprague?
Yes.
Mr. Waggles?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Okay. Before we adjourn, I'm just going to announce our next meeting. December 10th, we're going to have our next meeting. We're going to be in executive session from 4:30 to 5:30, then a work session from 5:30 to 6:30, and then our regular session will be at 6:30 PM. Again, that's December the 10th. Entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.